Hello. Let's get our engines started here. Okay, I'd like to bring to order the Rock Valley College Community College District, number 511, Committee of the Whole Meeting for Tuesday, June 10th, 2025, my wedding anniversary. So my wife wishes you all well. Thank you very much. Not me, just you, that's okay. So that's the call to order, because we have a roll call of the people that are here physically.
Gorski.
Here.
Goldsmith, here. Blake.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
And then they can read off their names and they'll say they won't get an answer, so.
Oh, should I?
Yeah, just say.
Nelson.
Nelson's not here.
Kudia.
Kudia's not here.
Salto.
Salto, okay. Board, board member by attendance, by means other than physical presence. Do I have a motion to allow Crystal Sotow to join by telephone?
So moved.
Moved by Bob Trojan, seconded by Kristen Simpson. Do we need a roll call for this one?
After roll call.
Roll call.
Gorski. Goldsmith, yes. Blake.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Trojan.
Yes.
Salto.
No, just the ones here.
Okay.
Just the ones here and then after.
All right, so we got enough votes to let Crystal in, so now we have, we can start the meeting with communications and petition or public comment.
We have no communications or petitions.
Thank you. Recognition of visitors.
We do have some visitors, but we'll be able to recognize them under general presentation.
All right. Review of the minutes for the committee of the whole, May 13th, 2025. Are there any questions regarding that? Hearing none, the move to general presentations. You'd like to start off at the Springbrook Road traffic circle?
Yes, and I'll ask our COO, Rick Jinks, to start us off.
Good evening, board. I have invited our design team to come and speak tonight about potential plans for the Springbrook entrance and the parking lots surrounding the entrance.
Facility master plan, plant, planning. The congestion and the roadway issues on the Springbrook side of campus were brought up and requested we attempt to find a better traffic pattern. The team is here tonight to speak to this situation and a potential solution. Please note, we will not be implementing any plans on the Springbrook entrance right away, but we are in need of updating Lot 7, which we need an understanding of the future to make sure that we can rebuild Lot 7 to fit the overall design plan. So at this point, I'd like to introduce our architect of record, Brett Rottinghouse, from OPN Architects.
And I just have a question, I don't know if it's for the speaker or for you. In the proper term for this traffic device, is it a traffic circle or a roundabout?
I just learned that today. It is actually a roundabout versus a traffic circle.
Yeah, yeah, I've been through this, this rodeo a few times, I just want to make sure we get our definitions down.
Yes, that gentleman there knows the difference.
All right, thank you.
Brett Rottinghouse with OPN Architects. I'm really just going to introduce IMAG here, but just to emphasize what Rick had alluded to, part of the master plan really was to re-envision how to make the south edge of campus more easily traversable and safer for vehicular access in and around the campus. So part of that was evaluating what that road could ultimately look like in the future so that we can avoid undoing work when we talk about those, those parking lots that are on the south edge of campus. So here tonight to talk about that is Eric Mo with IMAG, as well as Brad Lang. Right picture, wrong name on the slides there, but they will be able to go into a little bit more detail on the decision, the direction that we've explored.
Thanks Brett, yeah, come on up Brad. Not that there's anything wrong with Mark Rice, but Brad is, he's a PTOE, which stands for a professional traffic operations engineer, and that's a title that comes with a high amount of education experience. So we're really happy to have Brad on board for this project. The first thing we did when we were asked to perform the study of the south entrance was we collected data. We collected accident data to start off with. Switch the, there we go. Okay, so we, we collected accident data. We found that there are actually very few accidents on Springbrook Road in the past three, four years, we collected that data. However, there's a number of accidents within the parking lot area on, in parking lots seven, eight, nine, a lot of minor collisions. So that, that's something that's significant. We also found that there's a significant amount of traffic on Springbrook Road. The current average daily vehicle on, on Springbrook Road is 7,000, 8,000 vehicles per day, which is pretty high for a two-lane road. That data, or that, that average daily traffic has increased about 26% over the past six years. So we would expect that that traffic is going to continue to increase until it reaches saturation. A two-lane road, the maximum amount of traffic would be roughly about 10,000 vehicles per day. Yes, sir?
Isn't, isn't the traffic patterns, I mean, heavy in the morning, not so bad during the day, heavy at night?
That's exactly right, yes.
I travel that quite a bit.
Yes, that's exactly right.
Times it's busy, other times.
Yeah, that's, you know, that's, that's very typical for the areas where there's, there's educational facilities, you know, secondary schools, colleges, you'd have experienced a considerable amount of traffic during the peak hours. Brad will speak more to that as we, as we move along.
I'm going to just ask our board to withhold any questions until they, they can look at each other and take a pause and say, is this a good time for questions? And then say, have any questions at this point and move on or at the end of the presentation? Just to keep it alive, I don't want to break your stride, okay?
Thank you very much. Yeah, no, no worries. What's on the screen right now, what we're looking at here is the, it's, it's meant to illustrate the improvements to the, basically the entire south area, which includes also the parking lots. The idea is to eliminate the secondary ring road, which has been somewhat confusing to, to motorists within the campus. We'd have just one ring road in the end and, and, but then changing the access to that ring road to access the parking lots so that the, there's, there's better, more deliberate access within the, the parking lots seven, eight, and nine. And as you can see, we've sketched in on this, an additional entrance on the far right side, and that, that entrance would line up with Chartwell Drive, which is a minor city street on the opposite side of Springbrook Road. The entrance to the far west, of course, also it lines up with Hubbard Trail. And, and then the current entrance only is highlighted in green there, and the idea would be, that would have to be removed if the far right entrance was, was added. So with that, I'm going to, I'm going to move on and I'm going to ask Brad to step to the podium. I think I can advance this. Turn it on. Sorry. It is on. Okay, there we go.
Give me that. Good evening, thanks for your time. This diagram shows basically where we set up our traffic cameras to collect information. So we use a company called MyoVision, and we can collect traffic for an indeterminate amount of time, 24 hours, three days, et cetera. In this study, we, thank you. On this study, we collected traffic on 24 hours, and normally we pick a nondescript Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, to try to minimize any variations in the traffic pattern. We want the standard, average traffic pattern. So we set cameras up at Hubbard Trail, looking north, essentially. We set them up at the Chartwell intersection, again, looking north. We also set them up at the, the entrance to the, to the facility, that camera was looking south. And then we also set up two cameras within the parking lot area, basically focusing on, on Parking Lot 7. This is a graphical representation of a full day of traffic counts at Hubbard Trail. The important thing to notice here is the thicker the band of color, the more traffic you have. So west, eastbound Springbrook, we're showing, you know, 3,000 cars on this particular day. Eastbound, it's 2,900. And you can tell that anything coming out of Hubbard Trail is pretty, in or out of is pretty minor. Another thing to look at is the blue, the blue bands showing almost a pretty similar amount of cars turning left and turning right coming out of the, the exit only. That was during overall, this is during the peak, peak hour, which was 11:00 AM to 12:15. Again, nearly an identical flow of traffic coming, turning left and right out of the exit only. This would be for the camera at the, the entrance only. Notice that the large green band, and this is for full 24 hours, the large green band, nearly all the vehicles are turning, turning right. So our, our theory is that they're trying to access Lot 7 for the most part. And, you know, so that's about 1,400, you got about 45, or 455 turning left. So this is the same, same location, this is just the peak hour from nine, or eight to 9:15 AM. Again, the majority of the vehicles entering are turning left, excuse me, turning right. So this is at Chartwell, and I don't think it's going to surprise anybody, the vehicles coming out into and out of Chartwell are pretty minimal, but you can see the large traffic numbers for the entire day on Spring Creek, both eastbound and westbound, or I'm sorry, Springbrook. Dude, where's our video? Is that going to work? I don't know. Apologize, that's probably not good either. So what this would show is that one of the cameras at Hubbard Trail, when we were looking basically northeast, the video would show that of the traffic on, on Springbrook, we can tell by the, the video, you know, the traffic is, is moving at a fairly good velocity. Speed limit out there is about 40, I'd be willing to get, willing to bet it's more than that, maybe 45 or 50. But the video was showing that the people exiting and turning left are really starting to back up into the, the curved portion of the drive, making it difficult for right turners that want to exit out to eventually get into their lane and exit. Not sure why it's not working, sorry about that.
Mostly just highlights the difficulty of that inner ring road there. The, the video just helps illustrate that.
Yeah, it's just basically showing, showing the stacking of the cars and the delay for the, for the current configuration of the intersection. It's why the Hubbard Trail has a level service, I believe, at C, and, which is basically average. But as we project that 20 years or so into the future, it really starts to go into a D and an F situation with the, with the projected growth, and if the configuration stays the Is everybody familiar with what we consider level service? So when I, when I evaluate a roadway or an intersection, our, our computer programs take the numbers that we, that are generated for us from the MyoVision cameras, and through the process, we, we basically come up with a delay. And through the process, we basically come up with a delay. And level service is a feeling of what the delay is. So if you're on I-90, you're all by yourself doing 70-plus miles an hour, not a car in sight, that's level service A. But if you're sitting downtown Rockford and you haven't moved in 10 minutes and you can't see the end of the line, that's a level service F. It's basically gridlock. So, and there's levels in there between, there's B, C, D, E, and Fs. So level services A is the best you can get. F is obviously the worst. And it all depends on the delay time.
During that peak hour at Hubbard Trail, people trying to exit and turning left to go east on Springbrook Road, the current level of service is at D for that traffic during that peak hour.
If you'll get to the next slide. I think it's going to be our picture of the roundabout, but.
Okay. Let me say, okay, so we were asked to look at signalized intersections for this study, which we did. We looked at putting in signalized intersections and we evaluated the cost for those. But at this point, we felt like it would be a good idea to get in touch with the City of Rockford Engineering Office. And so we orchestrated a meeting between the Rock Valley staff and then also the City of Rockford Engineering staff. So we discussed the possibility of adding signalized intersections at either Hubbard Trail or Chartwell or both along Springbrook. So the engineering staff during that meeting said that the City of Rockford would not be in favor of adding signalized intersections. And additional signalized intersections, they felt like, you know, the signalized intersection at Mulford, the signalized intersection at Perryville, that's adequate. And to add further signalized intersections would not be something they'd be in favor of. They further suggested that we consider a roundabout type situation. And so that's when we, subsequent to the meeting, we looked at the possibility of installing roundabout configurations at both the Hubbard Trail and the Chartwell intersections. This illustration is the, what the, it's a preliminary drawing of what the roundabout would look like at Hubbard Trail, or excuse me, Chartwell. You can see it's, you know, the access into the campus, we have to kind of some, in order to align it with Chartwell, we do have to curve the road that comes into the campus, in and out of the campus, I should say, on the north leg of that configuration. And then, okay. There we go. So then this is the Hubbard Trail configuration. Should a roundabout concept move forward, it aligns with Hubbard Trail on the south leg and then aligns pretty much with the existing configuration on the north leg. Then we put together some cost estimates for both of those scenarios. And as you can see, the cost together, we're looking at approximately $3.3 million, you know, roughly, you know, a range of 1.4 to 1.7 or 1.2 to 1.6 for Hubbard Trail. And the reason we put in a range and we haven't really identified if there's going to, you know, the total extent of utility conflicts yet, you know, there might be a little bit of water main to relocate, some power poles and so on. And some of those details need to be worked out. So we've included some contingency in there for more for utility conflicts. And that, these costs are based on 2025 pricing. So in conclusion, what we believe is, should we go ahead and build the Chartwell roundabout configuration and then also improve the south lot improvements that were illustrated earlier, that's what we would recommend to start with. And then in two to five years after the completion, then we would recommend you go back and do some additional traffic studies. But because what we believe will happen is the vehicles that are exiting currently at Hubbard Trail will learn that it's better, there will be less delay to use the roundabout at Chartwell to make their way and go east on Springbrook Road. Because the north leg of that Chartwell roundabout, that's going to be two-way. That's not just one way, that's in both directions. So we feel it'd be best to leave the Hubbard Trail intersection as is, should the Chartwell roundabout configuration be constructed. And then again, come back and look at traffic and see what's happening there. And the other thing that we believe that there's, you know, there's a large volume of traffic on Springbrook Road. And it's puzzling to me, when you look at the overall city map, it's puzzling to me why is there so much traffic using Springbrook Road? And I think essentially it's people who'll take in a shortcut to get to wherever they're going, you know, towards the downtown Rockford. And so if the roundabout were to be constructed, that would delay those folks from their concept of taking a shortcut. And I believe a large amount of that traffic would migrate over to Spring Creek Road where they really should be in the first place, because that's a four-lane, more of an arterial type road instead of a major collector, which Springbrook Road would be considered. The accident severity, if, for roundabouts, the accident severity is much less the potential for accidents. You know, I did say earlier that we did not have, we don't have an accident pattern. High accident history on Springbrook Road. However, you know, just judging from the speed, we didn't do a speed study, but I'm judging that most people are exceeding the 40 mile an hour speed limit on Springbrook Road. And, you know, it's inevitable that sooner or later, there's going to be a T-bone at Hubbard Trail. And the roundabout virtually eliminates the happenstance of a T-bone type accident. So anyway, that's, yes. I would entertain any questions at all. Thank you, yes.
My first, I'm going to take, I just want to make sure the board knows that they first looked at lights, but the City of Rockford has just put a kibosh on it. I think it was diplomatic. I think the City of Rockford said, nope, no lights. And so they went to a Plan B, the roundabout. And that's why we're bringing it here, because as part of our long-term plan, we want to improve the traffic coming in and out of the campus. And I think it would be worthwhile if, not now, but in the future, those videos, and I think there was a security problem with your document, that maybe somebody didn't click and say, play the multimedia in the document while the videos weren't playing. Even though I'm not a fan of roundabouts, though I think the videos would illustrate the backup coming out of the lots that you were, you might have missed if you don't see it in your own document or videos, where there's a long line of people trying to leave the campus. So I believe, John, you had a question?
I had a couple of questions. I find this whole idea troubling myself. And do I, did I add this upright? The total cost of the two roundabouts and improvements to the parking lot are $6.6 million? I mean, there was 3.3 million for the improvements, and then there was a range for a couple different roundabouts.
Yes, sir. The two roundabouts are 3.3. The parking lot improvements, I didn't bring that number with me. What were we talking about? Do you recall? I'm sorry, I don't recall the number on the parking lots. That's a separate part of the study that we did. It was significant dollars, I do recall that, but I don't have that exact number. I could get back with you.
You're not recommending both roundabouts, though. It'd be one roundabout or the other one?
And maybe I wasn't clear on that. I'm recommending the roundabout be constructed at Chartwell.
Right.
And the wait-and-see mode on the Hubbard Trail, because again, I believe that the left turners at Hubbard Trail are going to migrate and use that Chartwell intersection. Once they find out, that's a much quicker and better way to go.
And Rick grabbed the mic, so.
Yeah, the 3.3 million is actually the estimated cost for the Rock Valley College Circle improvements, which is actually a CDB project. So that was put on there just as a note. The perimeter road will be done regardless, because the perimeter road in that design, whichever design cuts right through both of them, so we can do it right away and not impact the future.
So is that money in this, in the budget that we're going to go over later? And I missed it, or?
There is a, what's it called? For the trust, yeah. There's a trust agreement where we provide 25%, and we've already set that money aside. We talked about it, I believe at the last cow. And the state is providing the 75%. So we're providing, I think it's like a million, and they're providing the rest, or something like that.
So, and they've already said they're in?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And that's for the ring road lot seven to nine improvement, the 3.3?
No, that is just for the ring road. I'm not quite sure why they had the lot seven, nine improvement listed in there.
Okay, very good. Thank you for the clarification.
But for the roundabouts, we have to come up with that money?
So the roundabouts, if we wanted to do the Chartwell roundabout, which is what they're recommending, it would be, say, 1.7 million. We would pay to construct it and design it, and then the City of Rockford would take over the maintenance of it from here to eternity.
Okay, so it's, and that 1.7 million is out of our budget, right?
Correct.
And do we have that money in this year's budget?
No. Their plan is not to do the roundabout this year. The plan to do the roundabout is in a couple of years. And Ellen and I would start setting aside money like we've done in the past for other projects. I need to know what we're going to do in the future, because I've been setting aside money to redo Lot Seven, which is part of this project.
This is not a knee-jerk reaction to a report. Looks like the research goes back at least as far as 2023. You looked at it in 2024. You're bringing it to us in 2025 as a future project, not even estimated in the upcoming budget, which we're going to consider this month, because you don't have everything.
Correct.
Correct. So this is going forward.
This is part of the facility master plan.
Right, thank you.
If I may clarify, Mr.?
Well, before you do, no. Sorry. Any other questions or work?
I do. So I noticed that you've done some data collections with Springbrook Road and the Hubbard Trail. Right. Have you guys done any sort of like simulations with the peak traffic to simulate how the roundabout would be efficient?
So as far as simulations, no. So we take the peak hour traffic for our calculations.
Okay.
So obviously, it's just based on a one-hour, the peak one-hour during the day, either AM, midday, or PM.
Okay.
In some of these examples, we simply try to use the highest of the peak hour, whether it's AM or midday, to kind of get a better idea of the volume of traffic. But we don't have a physical, like, program-running simulation at this time of the roundabout.
Okay. Crystal, any questions?
No.
Okay, Jenna?
No questions.
I got two. If I understand it right, the Chartwell is, could be independent from the ring road improvements? Got two separate things? Or did it have to both be done together?
Ellen? So the ring road is separate. The ring road can be done at any time, because it's not, it doesn't change whether we do one plan or the other.
So on the conclusion page, construct Chartwell and the south lot, what is the total dollars of that?
The south lot is Lot Seven. We'll find that out for you. It's, last time we looked at it, just to replace it, was a million. If we're going to change the reconstruction on it, it's going to be more than that, so.
So if I look at it, you got two phases. One is Chartwell roundabout and south lot. And then second phase would be ring road, Lot Seven improvements. I mean, conceptually, you think.
So the way that it would break down, because CDB moved up their timeline, which is nice, we would do the ring road first, because we have the CDB funding. The ring road is consistent throughout both projects. Then, once we got that settled, we have to fix Lot Seven. Lot Seven is deteriorating.
Yeah.
So we would fix Lot Seven second. Then we would work on the traffic circle.
Okay. Thank you. And Ellen, my second point, having lived and worked in England for two and a half years, I find driving around roundabouts to be a piece of cake. And I chuckle every time I hear the stories on Auburn and South Main and all the accidents that they're having, and all the, oh, they got to reconfigure it now, or they're going to do one lane instead of two. Do we have any idea what that roundabout would impose on the college campus? Having seen the experience on Auburn and Main Street?
Well, this roundabout would be a single-lane roundabout. The Auburn was a dual lane, and there were many people that did not understand.
Now they're down to one lane.
The right lane. This particular roundabout would be just a single-lane roundabout.
Okay, so do you know if the single lane there is working better than?
I can answer. I mean, the latest reports are that the number of accidents are down, but congestion is up on the order of 60%. I just was describing, the other day, I saw a quarter-mile backup going through that roundabout, and a funeral was getting out at the funeral home. So I was really kind of worried about it. But that said, Springbrook is used as a kind of a bypass shortcut for people to speed through one point to another, not much as a, you know, thoroughfare as North Main. And again, I'm not a fan of the ways they've implemented them in Rockford and in Winnebago County, and that one, that one in particular. But seeing the video of the people exiting our lot is kind of making me think that if we can slow down the traffic using the Chartwell, we might not need the second one, because people are going to have to slow down to go through the Chartwell one. And again, we've got plenty of time to take a look at this. And I'll get to your question. I just want to see if Kristen has one, and then I'll come to you, okay?
My question was answered.
Okay.
I was just going to agree. You mentioned congestion and you mentioned speed. And every semester, we get complaints regarding the congestion around 7:30 to 9:00, 9:30, and speeding. And so our police officers, a lot of times lately, have been, in a response to neighborhood complaints, and ultimate complaints, that they've been monitoring that traffic during the really busy times, usually at the beginning of each term.
Trustee Nelson?
I've been on the board eight years. This is the first I've heard of any problems. And I'm kind of a fan right now of Vince Lombardi, never change a winning system.
Sorry, Jayden, you're a fan of?
He's not a fan, because he hasn't experienced, heard, this is the first time traffic problems around the campus have been, I mean, the problem that I have is the problem, not that I personally that I have is, the problem that I personally have, is that I know coming time, it's those peak times, as you opened up your first question, the peak times coming in out of those entrances are really hectic. And I'm just worried that people panicking to get to class or out at the end of the day may be like North Main, and they may not do proper roundabout etiquette and the like. But that said, we've got some time to think about it. Again, it's, as Rick pointed out, one, we've got the Ring project. Two, that he's going to come back to the board and ask us for money for Lot 7. Because Lot 7 money hasn't been requested or estimated yet, has it?
Some has been set aside in capital.
For Lot 7?
Yeah, for Lot 7, but we haven't.
And then the next project, or maybe in concert, would be one of the roundabouts, depending on money and?
The major question is going to be the entrance coming off of where that's going to be, because that's going to impact Lot 7.
Okay. So as we get closer to Lot 7, we really have to come up with an answer of how we all feel about this solution. Because the city's not going to, just, lights are not an option.
What I think I will do, with the board's consent, is I will have these gentlemen work on a Lot 7 drawing and plan more detailed, just Lot 7, with, if the existing entrance stays, or if we move to the new one. So that we can see how that will impact the college overall.
Yeah, traffic and costs, please. Thank you.
Yeah, definitely cost.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much for the presentation. I wasn't as irritated as I thought it would be, especially after seeing your videos. I saw them on my computer, and I'm like, it's really too bad those weren't displaying up there. Because especially the exit off of the south, or further south, that they're just lined up in our own lot waiting to get out. And if you put the roundabout down further, then maybe it'll give people more time to get out without having to put one right there at the highest traffic exit. So your recommendation is to put it at the lower traffic exit, actually to slow it down going in there. And then you're doing the city of Rockford a bonus, because then everybody will have to adhere to the speed limit going through there. So, but not that I need to do the city any favors, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does that end the Spring Brook Road roundabout discussion, Rick? Okay. Athletic Fields renovation update. President Spearman would like to speak to it, right?
Yes, thank you. Dr. Pyer is on vacation this week, so I will provide a brief response to the questions. But during the main committee of the whole meeting, the board received a recommendation from the administration for the installation of artificial turf rather than natural grass for the softball, baseball, and soccer fields. The original presentation was presented by Dr. Pyer, Athletic Director Darren Monroe, and Director of POM Jimmy Johann. And tonight, we also have head soccer coach Tim Romanello here. First, as a coach, Darren Monroe accounts for eight softball national titles, plethora of conference awards, athletic director. As athletic director, he's also accounted for so many more titles and awards. And I also appreciate Jimmy Johann's profession at RVC, understanding what we need regarding grass or turf. But he also serves as a head soccer coach for his daughter's travel team that competes all over the US. I just bring this up because I do trust their professional judgment. And I just want to remind the board that the initial idea was grass. It was a grass field. It's about 1.3 million. It was a failed bid because the 1.3 million went to a 3.1 million. So from that point, they decided, hey, let's see if it's going to cost us that much, let's look at the turf. Because over the longer period of time, turf would be better regarding maintenance and more accessible, or at least more access all year round to students and community. So nobody's arguing whether or not grass is better than turf. What they did was looked at two options, and because of the cost, recommended the turf at this point in time. So you have the presentation. We won't go through the entire presentation tonight. We're comfortable with where we're at. You have data regarding athletic injuries. You have some of it with us. Our board chair also provided you with some data regarding that as well. No one's going to argue whether or not injuries are more likely to occur on artificial turf over grass. But what it also shows is that with artificial turf, it's in this third-generation project, that it's improved more and more and more. And our student athletes are very used to playing on it. So that's where we're at. If you have questions, then Athletic Director Monroe is here to answer your questions. And then we can go from there.
And before we take your, thank you, but I just, so, I discussed this with President Spearman and agreed that you have in your packet lots of information from the previous meeting and the new updated information provided from the, from the college staff. I also provided some information. And I would ask if any of the trustees have questions on the information that's in the packet, run them through Bob and Ellen right now in terms of its financing. Is it Ellen for financing?
Ellen's finance.
Yeah, okay. Now, in terms of the debates on either safety of the chemicals used in either of the two applications, turf or grass and/or injury stuff, you can ask questions, you can route them to President Spearman to see if his staff will, can offer any clarification on them. And since none of us here, and I don't think anybody on your team was involved in any of those studies directly, they're simply referencing the, you know, the studies, the research studies that are out there, which are still up in the air in debate, and there's a lot of discussion on it. So, that said, speak. Well, you got a question?
Yes, I do. As you know, I've done my own independent research, and same conclusions as what you're drawing here. The potential safety effect, the cost effect, the long-term cost effect, and so on. But what I wondered, Coach, is what special training program, what special equipment requirements? What can you say about providing that to the athletes that would mitigate or tend to minimize any potential injuries caused by artificial turf? I think that element needs to be one of the key elements in us deciding one or the other.
You know, I would just say, in our experience, what you would notice in a lot of the information that we provided to you in the reports, that many of our athletes are already used to training at a young age on the turf already. Obviously, for us, training is hard no matter, no matter what area you look like. Playing on a natural surface that is level, obviously, is beneficial. But playing on a natural surface that is unlevel because of playing surfaces and conditions prevents or causes those injuries as well. You know, in terms of keeping the turf updated, you know, a part of this project was a sweeper that was included within the turf project there. But obviously, for our staff, in athletics, you can never prevent all injuries. You know, and baseball and softball are going to have different challenges when it comes to that than what soccer is going to, or football is going to. So to be able to mitigate that, some of it is just contact, some of it is non-contact. They could happen both. And what we were trying to do with the studies is just see what is the trends. And it, I think that what you saw is it's inconclusive, that there is more injuries from a turf surface than there, than there is in the natural grass.
And, and then we're, I'll get your question. But more important, I mean, is that I think we've gone over this and the like, but, and I've mentioned that, I asked a question of Ellen, I asked a question of President Spearman. As we've moved forward with this, you've gone through, through a pre-bid process with the vendor and pretty much have a vendor already selected if we, you know, move, you know, that's what you're going to ask us to vote on at the, at the next meeting. I just want to make sure that that vendor is fully compliant with their responsible bidder ordinance. And to get that question out of the way, even this week, make sure that they meet all the requirements for it. Trustee Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Coach, let me just clarify for myself what you just said. And are you taking the position that the data shows that it's inconclusive whether there are more injuries on artificial turf or grass, than, or grass? That that, that there's no clear conclusion that can be drawn? Or are you agreeing with the president that, you know, there's no argument about that?
I would say, when you're talking in equal playing surface that is, that is level, that it's inconclusive. But when you're talking other factors like weather, factors like divots, factors like unequal playing fields, that a turf playing field is going to be safer.
That a what playing surface?
Artificial turf is going to be safer.
Well, I think you're misinformed, but you're entitled to your opinion.
Yeah, John, I haven't seen any of that in the, in the studies, but that's okay. So, any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Unless you, you want to, anything else you want to add that is outside of the question?
No, I would, I would just, you know, in the world of athletics, you know, I've, I've been around the country. The trends that you see from a, from a turf perspective compared to a grass perspective in terms of facilities that are, are being updated is, is the trend is going to turf. We put our athletes on turf. You can see the percentages in the number of times that we travel and play on turf fields. To win national championships, the Division 1, Division 2 men's, Division 3, Division 3 and Division 2 NJCA national tournaments are played on artificial turf surfaces. And I would tell you as a coach, I would tell you as an athletic director, there's no way that I would intentionally put my athletes in a position in which they're going to get hurt. And I, I would, I would just like to throw that out. You know, we, we're in a world of trying to win games, and the last thing that we would ever want to do is put our players in a position where we knew that they would be injured. And I would, I would just leave it at that.
Do you think the decisions to go to turf are because of that it's better than grass or possibly like the college here, considering it because of the cost?
I would say that if we were able to invest the resources and the manpower to be able to have a level surface from a grass perspective, but then you're adding in weather, you know, you look at our softball, baseball fields, you know, we're trying to play games in March. It's raining every day. You know, we have to, we have to pull a tarp on, pull a tarp off. We are playing in surfaces that are wet with cleats in which they stick in the, in the, in the ground after that rain. It's the same thing that's happening in soccer. If it rains in the morning, and we're expected to play a game at 1 o'clock, we are playing in a surface that hasn't drained. And I think that when you're, when you're evaluating a regular surface on a dry day, sure, grass might be a little bit safer. But when you add the other factors of snow and rain and all those other things that need to be factored in, in my opinion, to this decision, it's, the grass is more dangerous. You know, that we have frost issues that we deal with in baseball and softball, that we're trying to get a field ready, and the, and the, and the surface is not unthawed yet. But we're putting our athletes in those positions in outfield that you can see their cleat sinking, where you won't have that issue on an artificial turf surface.
Anything else? No, no other questions? Just anything else?
I have nothing.
Okay, thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Coach.
Thank you.
Okay. So this is going to, that's going to be on the, the staff, administration's going to be, we're going to have that on an agenda to vote on. And I just ask you to, they're going to give us a specific ask for a specific solution, the turf with a specific vendor. And you're going to do, make sure that you get in writing in advance that they meet the responsible bidder. And that's going to be, it's not whether or not we go turf or grass, it's going to be for a specific turf solution at the end of the month, correct? All right. And if we don't opt for that, then they have to go back to the drawing board.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Anything else under general presentations? No? Teaching, learning, communications discussion. Trustee Goldsmith. Yes, hand it off to somebody.
Do I hand it off to Dr. Smith?
Yes.
I'm handing it to you, Dr. Smith. Thank you. Oh, no, you're good. Good evening, trustees. I have enrollment updates in your packet for both fiscal year '25 and '26. '25 really is ending this week with Summer 1 ending, so there is nothing really to talk about here, except that it looks, you know, still that we're going to be over budget and over stretch. Fiscal year '26, Summer 2 session is starting on Monday, June 6. The information in your packet is changing on a daily basis, so I want to provide an update for today. As of today, we're 125% to budget for Summer 2 and 120% to the stretch goal. And for fall, which begins August 16, we're 70% to the budget and 68% to the stretch goal, and still working with our students to get them enrolled over the summer. Are there any questions?
Whatever you did last year to keep the spring up, are you going to do the same thing when the fall starts to?
Of course. We continue to work with our currently enrolled students to make sure they're re-enrolling for the next term, yes.
So do you have a reasonable estimate of how close you'll get to for, to the goal of, for fall?
Since we're trending ahead of last year, I think it's safe to say that we'll meet the budget for fall.
Thank you.
Of course, we'll continue to monitor that throughout the summer, so you'll know if it's trending up or down. Thank you.
I don't have any questions? What, renewal?
Yeah, I can speak to that briefly.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, so I'll speak just briefly to the Studer Education Agreement. You heard the presentation last month. And so now administration's asking for the board to extend the contract. And you have that for two years, extend the Studer Education. We're focused on strategic planning, executive coaching, accountability, partner, confidential surveys. These are the different areas that Studer has been very good at helping us and moving us forward and keeping us on track. So I want, unless you have questions, if you have questions, Dr. Smith can answer some of those questions with me. But, just so you know, we are asking the board to support the Studer Education contract.
And I speak to that. In terms of, at our last meeting when we discussed this, Trustee Trojan brought up the idea of kind of a general survey of your leadership team. And I haven't essentially released the final results of it because there was one person on the team that hadn't replied yet. And you don't have to now because I'm going to reveal the results of the, I think it's a good thing just to call it out is now. Everybody that replied thinks the studies were very important and very useful in their decision-making and the decision-making for the college. So another question that I had was on the different elements of the Studer training and coaching for individual people. And most of the respondents said they took advantage of it. And they all said, whether or not they took advantage of it or not, thought it was valuable, that the training and coaching services that Studer offered was valuable. The one item of even close to kind of debate was, most of the people leaned towards, yes, Studer was. Studer was, contributed and was helpful in helping develop the strategic plan, but a couple of the people thought that maybe you might be able to do without it, but since you have a large part of your team liking the coaching, liking the training, and thinking that their participation in the strategic planning process was valuable, thinking that, does that answer your questions, Bob, as the, how the leadership team? I can get to the specific answers. I was going to, I waited kind of up to the last minute today to see if I could get another, get the last person to respond.
Well, since the item was discussed at the last, at the board meeting, I'm a little disappointed that we didn't have a chance of seeing what the questions were, and of course, more importantly, what the results were of the questionnaire. So to that extent, I guess I'm a little disappointed that we, as a board, since we discussed it, didn't have access to either the questions or the answers.
Well, I didn't want to reveal the questions and the results if not everybody had replied, because one of the questions was not to, not to discuss it with anybody else, so. But I'll send you the, and the team, because it's, there's nothing, we can't talk about it enclosed necessarily because it's an open survey and there's no, there's no answers attributable to any individuals alike, so I'll send you that information, so.
John has a question.
Yes.
No, it's more of a comment. I, I agree in principle with Mr. Trojan on, you know, the more information we get, the more informed decisions we can make, is my feeling. And I appreciate the chairman's efforts in this, and I know he spends a lot of time doing it, but it, it, when you don't get the information and you don't get it, in the idea that it was going to be delivered in, you know, it's, it prevents part-time trustees who are not, who are essentially elected, so they want the job, but are unpaid, from giving an even more informed decision.
You'll have the, the questions and the, and the survey results tomorrow. I was hoping to get the last straggler to fill it out, and they didn't, so I don't have it, and I don't ask that person to fill it out now because you've known the questions and you know the answers, and so it'd be a bias to rate that, so. So I was waiting till the last minute and...
Understandably.
So, but you'll have it, and we're not voting on it for another couple of weeks, so you can review it then, so.
Dr. Stewart.
What was that? Oh, yeah.
Good evening, trustees. I present to you the annual HCCTP, which is the Highway Construction Careers Training Program Intergovernmental Agreement for Renewal. This has been brought to you the board several times before. It's an annual agreement. Here are some highlights of the program to refresh your memories. One, RVC's Highway Construction Careers Training Program aims to help aspiring first-generation construction workers gain acceptance into the construction trades. Two, each cohort is 14 weeks, with trainees engaging in 450 hours of skilled trades preparation and apprenticeship readiness training. HCCTP is funded entirely by the Illinois Department of Transportation. Trainees do not pay tuition or any fees and earn an hourly stipend to support expenses related to training. The goal for trainees is to learn about and pursue career opportunities in the construction industry. My ask this evening is for the Board of Trustees to approve the IGA between the Illinois Department of Transportation and Rock Valley College, or Rock Valley College to administer the 2025-2026 IDOT Highway Construction Careers Training Program. Any questions?
Questions? Bob?
Is this the same agreement as it was the previous year, in the previous year and the previous year?
Yes.
No changes?
No.
Thank you.
Trustee Nelson?
Counselor, is this attorney reviewed? I don't see it here, but...
It does not have the attorney reviewed stamp. We have not reviewed this particular agreement.
Well, we do normally review grants. This is a grant from IDOT, so we do have the attorneys review grants.
I'd like an attorney review. I think that's important, but...
Well, okay, I'm just saying to you, that's not something we typically do, but we do if the board wants it.
Still like it.
Thank you.
Review it.
Happy to.
Thank you. Question?
Is there any financial support for the, for people who go into these programs, into the specific program?
Yeah, this tuition is paid for by IDOT.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, next item. What do you got? Bujic?
Yes.
Bujic Plan Goals Update?
Good evening. I'm very pleased to share with you this evening about Karen Campus. Student development research asserts that students that feel more connected to the college are more likely to persist and be retained to complete their goals. Building on this theory, the Institute for Evidence-Based Change has created Karen Campus. Karen Campus has researched ways to increase student connectedness and found that there is an increase in connection when all faculty and adjuncts display certain common behaviors. RVC contracted with Karen Campus to determine what that means for RVC. It is important to note that while many students already feel connected and supported, there's always room for growth. This is particularly apparent when you look at disaggregated course completion data. During this process, I had the privilege of interviewing 11 faculty and adjuncts, all whose students have high rates of retention and completion. I wanted to identify any common must-have behaviors from their classrooms. From there, six faculty and staff worked alongside Dr. Matthew Oaks as the faculty facilitator to participate in three working group sessions with our Karen Campus coach. Throughout this work, we were able to identify six common behaviors as seen in Slide 9. As we roll this out to all faculty and adjuncts, we'll be asking them to commit to these common six behaviors. To support this, the team is working to create web resources and supplemental materials for all faculty and adjuncts. This will be rolled out to everybody at the Fall Development Day on September 2nd.
Any questions?
You're done? I have a question.
Trustee Trojan?
Looking at the, the graphs, the yellows and the greens and the reds and so on, and you say we're already a caring college, and so I have no idea, is there a national standard or a national comparison, a benchmark, that we could evaluate, is this good or where are we falling down? I mean, I guess the lower the green, that's not so good.
Right.
But how do we compare against other institutions?
We compare pretty well if we're looking at overall. Where we tend to have issues is where, with the disaggregated data, with different groups that are not faring as well as overall.
But do you have numerical comparisons, side by side of them?
I do not have the national. I know that we try to get to a point of 70%. We exceed that, but not all of our different groups have a 70%.
70% of what? I mean, I don't understand.
Course completion rates, so A, Bs, and Cs in their courses.
Okay.
And that doesn't take into account the retention. That data I don't have in front of me.
And keep in mind, this is about, simply regardless, if we were even at 80, it's about continuous improvement. So we're going to keep trying to grow and improve, because if we have student retention, then that's another way to grow enrollment.
And that's how we can try to keep our fall to spring flat, like we like to see.
Yeah, keep it flat.
Got to keep it flat.
Yeah. The IEBC, for those of us who are in the dark as to who, who that is, who is that? I mean, I, I get that it's an organization, but what, what kind of organization is it?
They're an organization that works with community colleges to help with continuous improvement, to help ensure that students feel engaged with their community colleges.
I, I got that.
Okay.
Are they a not-for-profit? Are they a government agency?
I'm sorry, they are not-for-profit, and they're based out of California.
And how are they, do we help fund them?
This was, yes, they receive grants from various, various agencies such as Lumina Foundation. We did not receive a grant. We paid for this out of last year and this year's budgets.
Okay. So they, I mean, they, they offer a service that may be subsidized, but you, you pay for it, or at least we do?
We did, yes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So this is, this program's talking about, just so I understand, that it's talking about pretty much increasing student engagement, right, through faculty members, right?
Correct.
Okay. So my question is, is like, have students, have you at all through this program gotten feedback from students about like the Karen Campus like practices?
We have not just yet. What I could say is we were trying to build upon our CSE results from 2023, where we showed that we already show that our students feel that we, that our faculty have encouraged them and been promise, promising, but we wanted to make sure that we follow up with good practices.
So it was, we didn't do the qualitative data, but the quantitative data was based on student outcomes.
Okay. Any other questions? Anything else to add?
No, I, I thank the board very much for supporting us so that we can better serve our students.
All right, thank you. Grants update then, if I'm reading this right? Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have a grants update similar to what I did last year. In fiscal year 25, we have 32 grants that are over $100,000. Most of our grants are over $100,000, but I kept it in that range to simplify the report, and those totaled $16.4 million. I apologize, I noticed today that the graph is not labeled very well, so one is actually our federal grants, and two, the line is our state grants. So that consisted of $8.4 million in federal funds, 11 grants, including one multi-year grant from the U.S. Department of Labor, and seven point, well, almost $8 million in state grants, 21 grants included in that, and six of those are multi-year grants, three of which are for the Climate and Equitable Jobs Act programs, and three are for capital improvements that we received from the state of Illinois. I want to skip over, that's the executive summary of the funding, but I want to skip over some of the slides and go to the ones about federal, the state of the federal budget as it relates to grants. So if you could actually go to the one right before that, Eriseli? Thank you. We, you know, as you know, since January, we have been hearing a lot from the federal government regarding funding for grant programs specifically, so I wanted to provide an update in how those, of those things have impacted Rock Valley College within this fiscal year. We have had one grant discontinued, which was the National Endowment for the Humanities Grant, which was $60,000 spread over two years. That grant was designed to collect documents and create an oral history of the desegregation order in the Rock for public schools. That grant was not discontinued just for Rock Valley, the entire program was terminated, so of course then we don't receive the funding. Also, we have received a letter from our Strengthening Community Colleges Liaison, which is the multi-year, over $5 million grant that we should cease all activities related to DEI. This went to all their grant recipients. So we can still spend those funds, I haven't heard anything about a funding decrease or termination, just making sure our activities are aligned with the executive orders. And we have had additional reporting burdens for our grants. It isn't too substantial at this point, but could become more if we receive more terminations or changes. The Illinois Community College Board wants us to report monthly on any of that information so they can track it across the state. It's possible we could have greater impact in fiscal year 26, if you want to go to the next one. Thank you. So President Trump did release his recommendations, maybe about a month ago, for cuts, reductions, and consolidations of grant programs and other programs funded by the federal government. Of course, we won't know the details and how we might be impacted until the budget is approved in Washington, but what this could mean for us is, these are all the grants we either receive directly from the federal government or as a pass-through from the states. So these are the programs that could be affected by any consolidations, cuts, or reductions. I will point out one thing that's a little, these are, most of these programs you can kind of track, they're directly related, but under Department of Labor, what's been proposed is that the Department of Education and Department of Labor consolidate their workforce development grants. So into one program tagged Make America Skilled Again, so that would impact our Strengthening Community Colleges grant, because that is a workforce grant we receive directly from the federal government. Do I know what that impact would be? No, not until we see the final budget and how that's all shakes out. And also that will impact WEOA, Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act funding, which comes to us as a pass-through from the workforce connection.
And as of today, I think we just saw an article where they're pushing for a lot more of the dollars to go directly to K-12.
For Perkins, yes.
For Perkins, but that's millions of dollars that would directly impact us at the community college level.
So as we receive more details on how, what the impact would be, we can share them with them and we'll make adjustments accordingly, but as of yet, we're just kind of waiting to see what will be decided.
Okay. That the end of your report?
It is.
Okay, I'm going to go start from right to left. Kristen?
So two things. On your list of state and federal grants, have you kind of earmarked those that might be at risk, number one? Question number one. Number two, are there any areas that are not on that list that you think, hey, maybe we're going to get some workforce development funding that would maybe offset some of those that we would potentially lose? So there must be some goodies coming too, because I know they're talking about workforce development.
They are. I think the overall workforce development budget, when you look at that Make America Skilled Again, will be reduced. The question is, how will those funds be distributed?
Right.
So I don't know for sure if they'll be distributed in ways that will benefit or not benefit community colleges at this point. We do have a list of all our grants, and we have gone through and kind of informally rated them, like you said, about what might be at risk, so just so that we know and we can try to plan without knowing the exact information. I do believe we're still, we have received good news from the state recently. We've had, seen an increase in our Perkins fund allocation for next year, an increase in our PATH grant, which is the healthcare grant for next year. So from the state, we're seeing...
Increases.
Potential increases.
There might be some offsetting.
There might be some offsetting, yeah, and we continue to look for private funding opportunities as well, so if we can offset something.
Any other question? Okay, Jenna?
What, are there any ways that RVC plans to support Dr. Oaks and Professor Gilbert and their work going forward, or is that project just kind of stalled?
We have stalled that project at this point.
That one is stalled.
Other question?
No.
Other than the frown? I know. My question would be related to trustee Trojan's question. Given the staff reduction or maybe even the elimination of the Department of Education, who would be lobbying in our behalf to, for those workforce initiative type of grants and stuff like that?
So regarding on the state level, you still have ICTA that is very strong in doing that, Illinois Community Colleges Trustee Association, but on the national level, AACC has been a strong component, American Association of Community Colleges. It's the national organization that helps with the lobbying of the federal regulations and things of that nature. As trustees, I would always recommend that you leverage your relationships with our Congress, Congress, our legislators in the Congress, and see if that would persuade their votes as well. Department of Education... Department of Education, if that goes, we still don't know how much they're really gonna disperse to the states and how that's really gonna directly, we know it's gonna directly impact us on a negative, but they still, there's not a plan to say, oh, every state will implement this or have this much money. So it, and that was, we just read something like that today about the emergency request that President Trump is putting out to disband Department of Education. So.
Okay. Any other questions here?
Yeah. So I have three questions.
Oh, go ahead, and then I'm gonna come back to Crystal after you speak to see if she has any question.
So my first question is, in terms of the federal work study program, that's something that really impacts a lot of students here. I mean, being able to have a way to earn income, especially for a lot of like low-income students, such as me. What is going to be the contingency plan for that if that gets reduced or cut? Because I have heard that there, there is going to be cuts soon, possibly to that.
We have, we also have institutional funds that we can use for some student worker, but it wouldn't be as much as was available with the total of federal work study and institutional funds. I don't know if Ellen has anything to add to that or not.
Well, I can add, just that we, we don't have a full-fledged contingency plan for every executive order or threat that they have. What we've done is compiled what the data we have, looked at it, and then we just have to wait until something is real and then respond accordingly. Because every day, there's something, there's something new. And we don't know how or how it's gonna be held up, how it's gonna be amended or tweaked. So we plan, we have it, we know our, where these threats are for our institution, but until it goes through, there's not much that we can do in that situation. Federal work study accounts for, do you know how much off the top that counts for as far as budget?
In fiscal year 25, that was almost a quarter of a million dollars, maybe a little over when you factor in CUG, the $250,000. And I know Financial Aid has projected that there will be a decrease for fiscal year 26 for federal work study.
A decrease in students receiving financial aid?
A decrease in what the federal government will fund for federal work study.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, and I would just like to comment. I would use the term "policy changes" rather than threats, unless you're specifically referring to a SWOT analysis where you're considering it a threat.
I'm thinking more of the threat in that way, SWOT, not a physical threat.
Just, right, I just wanna make sure. Okay, thank you. Yeah, follow-up?
Yeah, and my second question, and I'll just leave it at this, this last question. In terms of the English literacy in civics education, does that include the, the teaching English courses here?
That's, the English is the second language courses in adult education, yes.
So that, that would be part of one of the cuts if it came down to it?
That is a potential cut from the federal government, yes.
Okay.
Trustee Nelson, are you, you have any questions? Trustee Nelson?
No questions.
Okay, Crystal? Any questions on grants?
Like faded out a little bit, but I think I'm good.
All right. Well then, if, and if there's another question on the grants update, we'll move forward to six, seven, and eight. And regarding six, seven, and eight, since some of these may be, pick up from previous agreements, if you would point out any differences in any of the previous agreements, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
So this evening, we continue to present the early college agreements between Rock Valley College and various high school districts. At the last committee of the whole meeting in May, I brought you six renewals and one new agreement. This month, we bring you three renewals and one new agreement. The new agreement deals with our Career Pathways Jump Start Program. So my first ask this evening is for the Board of Trustees to approve the intergovernmental agreement between Rock Valley College and the Belvedere Community School District, commonly referred to as District 100 for the Career Pathways Jump Start Program. Next, we move along to the dual unarticulated credit that we have. And my second ask this evening is for the Board of Trustees to approve the MOUs for dual unarticulated credit between Rock Valley College and the following high school districts. One, Belvedere Community Unit School District, and two, the Honanega Community High School District. The last category of agreements being presented this evening to the Board is the running start intergovernmental agreements. My final ask for the Board of Trustees this evening is to approve the running start intergovernmental agreement between Rock Valley College and the Belvedere Community Unit School District, commonly referred to as District 100. So after these agreements, I think the last set of agreements I have to bring you would be for RPS 205. So their stuff goes to their Board this month. Once it's approved, it will come to our Board for July. And that should conclude all of the agreements.
Okay. Expect RPS 205 to come to us in July, correct?
Yes.
All right.
It's going to their Board now, so.
Kristen, any questions on items, Teaching Learning Six, Seven, or Eight, any of the agreements?
Nope.
Okay, Bob?
So once you get the final agreement in, can you prepare for us a listing of how many students from each of the schools this year compared to last year?
I do that every year in September.
In September, okay.
That's right, September, October, they are about.
Yeah, comparison year to year.
Yes.
That works.
Yep.
Any other questions, Bob?
No.
Jenna, no questions? Crystal, any questions on Six, Seven, or Eight? Okay, next down, student trustee?
No questions.
No questions. Trustee Nelson?
I did see that they are all, are all attorney-reviewed, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hearing no other questions, we'll move on to the finance discussion. Purchase reports A, B, C, D, and E. Ellen?
Okay, first up, we have purchase report A, which is FY25 amendments. There is one item on this report. It is for Walter. It is an increase of $9,500 for a total of $48,500 due to an increase in training services for courses that include Warehouse 101, Forklift Training, Aerial, Pallet, and Pedestrian Safety. Are there any questions regarding this purchase report? If there are none, we'll move on to purchase report B, which is FY26 purchases. Item A is for Team Reel for $1,888,381.95. This is for the groundwork and field preparation for a new turf installation for the RVC baseball and softball fields. The Softwell Consortium awarded Team Reel a contract for installation of the base construction work, and the college may participate in joint purchases by government units. Item B?
And I'd just like to remind you, so both item A and item B need to meet responsible bidder.
Correct. Field Turf USA for $1,165,849.45. This is for the turf material and installation of the turf on the prepared groundwork for the RVC baseball and softball fields. Again, this is through the Sourcewell Consortium, who has issued Field Turf a contract for installation. Item C is to Global Industrial Company for $31,091.40. This expense is to purchase 24 workstations for the Aviation Career Education Center, and each workstation includes a workbench, stools, shelves, and lighting fixtures. The existing workstations are at the end of their life and need replacement. Bid 25-10, Workstations for ACEC was opened on May 2nd and had one response from Global Industry, Industrial Company. Item D is for Entree Computer Solutions for $27,666. This expense is for the Extreme IQ Support Pilot Subscription License that provides cloud-based management and monitoring capabilities for Extreme Network access points. This software will enable visibility, configuration, and analytics through the Extreme Cloud IQ platform. Five quotes were sought and two vendors declined to vote. Entree Computer Solutions was the lowest responding bidder.
So you requested quotes. You specifically asked the vendors to quote on it and they declined to return a quote, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Item E is Mechanical for $341,242. This expense is for the demolition and replacement of the existing summer boiler with a new two-boiler system. Bid 26-18, Boiler Replacement was opened on June 4th, and we received five submittals. This does include a 10% contingency. Item F is for John Morrissey Accountants for $30,000. This is for accounting services to support the adult education program, and this is a grant expense. The next item, G, is also John Morrissey Accountants for $25,000, and this expense is for accounting services to support the adult education program. Oh, I'm sorry, this one is for the refugee services.
I have a question.
Yes, Bob, go ahead.
Morrissey is my personal accountant, so I probably should abstain from the vote.
Sure.
So I don't know if you want to pull that out separately or, because if you vote on the whole package, the whole B, or pull it out separately?
That would be the right thing to do at the next meeting.
Separate it out?
Yeah, I think so.
I just wanna make sure it's transparent.
Appreciate that. Item H is for American Government Services for $60,000. This expense is for AGS Prime, Strengthening Community Colleges System, which is a software platform that was developed and is utilized for previous iterations of the SCC grant, and that is the $5 million multi-year grant from the federal government. This web application will facilitate efficient and transparent data collection to ensure accurate tracking and reporting of the data required by the US Department of Labor. And AGS is the sole provider of this grant-specific platform, and the grant will be paying for this.
Question. So a grant's paying for it, and we use it to collect data and, and report. My first quick read-through of it was, it's grant software to apply for a grant, but we're actually using it to report student data to the United States government, right? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And the AGS is the sole provider of this solution?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
The next item is Sorenson Communications.
I'm just wondering, that's why it's under the Department of Labor.
Is for Sorenson Communications at $60,000. This expense is for Sign Language Interpreter Services to ensure the accessibility of needs of students are met. So this supports psychologists initiatives to meet the needs for accommodations. Next item is CPC Printing and Promotions for $41,798. This expense is for the printing and mailing of the fourth edition of the RVC magazine. Bid 25-16, Printing and Mailing of the RVC Magazine was opened on May 21st. Received six submittals. The magazine will be delivered to all households between July 28th and August 1st, 2025, and this includes PO boxes and roll routes in our district. And the last item on this purchase report is for Pharrelli for $156,000. This expense is for consulting services for the college's SAS migration project. The college has 170 informer reports that source from Colleague and a myriad of custom-built Colleague processes that will need to be rewritten in order to function correctly in the SAS environment. Pharrelli will assist in rewriting and transitioning the informer reports and the customized processes.
You're migrating from what to what?
We're migrating from Unidata to SAS.
We're, yes, we're migrating from Unidata, which is a system we currently use in the cloud, to SAS for Colleague, so it's a SAS upgrade for Colleague.
Okay. You're migrating to Colleague SAS?
Yes, Colleague is the software that we currently utilize, and they're requiring us to go to a SAS environment.
Okay.
And in order to do that, the older software that we're programming.
SAS is an acronym and it's a company, services a software or a company, so I just, is it the company or just services?
Sure.
One's a vendor, one's, one's a general industry term.
I would say it's the general industry term.
Okay, thank you.
Question?
John, I mean, Bob?
John, did it again, John.
We think so alike, Bob.
On item J, how many of these magazines are there that get mailed out?
Others tell me she believes it's 60,000 or a little more.
60,000?
Yes.
And it goes to the whole, all of the district? Okay, thank you.
John?
I was gonna ask, where did Mr. Morrissey come from, but probably got a fine recommendation, so.
What?
The question was, since we don't have to go out for bid for the Morrissey or the county agreement, how did we come up with the Morrissey as a solution for the two accounting solutions?
And I suggested maybe you got an excellent recommendation.
No, actually, those two grant programs have been using Morrissey for two years now, approximately, and it came down to finding someone who really had the capacity and the ability to take those programs on. Several of the accounting, smaller keeping accounting firms did not have the capability to do that.
You're off the hook, Bob. Not that you were on it.
All right, next purchase report, C, is for FY26 site rentals. We have two site rentals. The first one is the iconic building for $216,930, and this is the annual rent for the 99 East State property, which is used primarily for the adult education program and refugee services. The second item is to the Rockford, Greater Rockford Airport Authority for $11,500, and this is the land lease for the property on Sesna Drive for the aviation maintenance program. Are there any questions?
Question?
Right? If there's none, we're moving on to purchase report D, FY26 Software Licensing Renewals. These are the annual renewals for the software licenses utilized by the college. They do contain contractual increases. I am not planning on reviewing each of these individually since there are 19 of them. The total of this is $2,446,384, with the largest item being for Alution for $1.3 million. Are there any questions?
Yeah, but, no. John?
You know, for us anti-technical layman, are these like a yearly renewal? Or what are we paying for her?
These amounts are for an annual renewal, so these are for a one-year subscription.
Okay, and I'm, is there any way to save any money? Or have we had these people for a long time?
They're all customers, vendors that we have worked with in the past. I am pleased that we did reduce one vendor from last year since we were not utilizing it. So we do review them to make sure we are utilizing them to the best of our abilities and what their capabilities are. and what their capabilities are, and we do look at them to see if we do need to continue to maintain services with them year to year.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Next purchase report. This one's the big one. This is for the FY26 blanket purchase orders. My intent is not to review each one of them, but a few notes. Healthcare Service Corporation, which is the first one on the list, is for $8,825,000 for group medical insurance. This does include an increase to anticipated, for anticipated increases in health insurance premiums. The next one I just want to speak to is Constellation New Energy, $2.5 million. This is for gas and electric service, and this does include an increase due to rising costs, particularly for electricity. The next one I would like to speak to is the Illinois Community College Risk Management Consortium. That's $13,357,000. This is for insurance premiums for property casualty, workers' compensation, and athletic insurance. This as well includes a projected increase in premiums. The last item I want to speak to is for Guardian, which is $696,000. This does include the premiums for supplemental life insurance, group medical insurance, dental, and long-term disability insurance. Total blanket purchase orders for this report is $21,724,000, which is an increase of approximately 7% from the previous fiscal year. Are there any questions?
John?
The rate of inflation was not 7% in the last year, was it?
No, it was not, but most of these items are going to be highly impacted for increases for group medical, electricity, so that is driving most of the increase. Most of the other ones are relatively flat or have minor increases.
Is there anything we can do to mitigate the electric bill? I got a mailing that you can sign up and support solar farms and receive a 15% discount, which I'm not saying I believe, but I did get that mailing.
I've seen that mailing as well. Are there any other questions?
Any other questions? Thank you for that.
All right. We're going to move on to the Cash and Investment Report. So cash and investments, operating cash and investments increased nearly $4.5 million during the month of May to $103.7 million. The main contributing factor outside of normal business was the receipt of that earning retention credit from the Internal Revenue Service that we spoke about last month, resulting in a net increase after payment of the consulting fees of $3.3 million. I do want to note that the $3.3 million transfer to capital and the funding of the CDB roadway project of $1.1 million that you approved in May was not completed until early this month. The percent of operating cash and investments on this report is 101.98%. However, if you adjust for the two pending transfers that occurred in June, it would be 97.66%. Working cash fund increased $8,554 to interest earned during the month, and the capital fund increased $2.8 million to $73.6 million due to the receipt of property taxes from the counties predominantly for debt service. Are there any questions?
I'm assuming Bob will have a question? Any questions, Bob? Nothing? Oh, wow. Okay. Good. That must be a good day for you, Ellen.
I like the trend chart on the next page, though.
Well, keep in mind, it's going to go down next month. I saw...
Okay.
Next, we have the Bond Parameters Resolution. This is the resolution calling for the parameters issuance of general obligation bonds not to exceed $56,250,000, which are to be issued to retire the debt certificates that were funded in April of 2025. The intent of this resolution is to set forth the bond parameters, which includes date, denomination, rates of interest, and maturities of the bonds, and fix all the details to the issue and execution, and provide for the levy of tax efficient to pay both the interest and principal of the bonds as they mature. These bonds are expected to be sold in July and close and fund in August. Are there any questions?
Questions?
I have a question. So with these bonds, right, is it that be able to, be able to pay those bonds off, right?
Correct.
Does the, do the property taxes have to be raised as a result at all?
Yes. So you're new to our board, but...
Yeah.
So we issued debt certificates, and they then are subsequently paid off by bonds, which are paid off by property tax receipts. We've been working, the board and finance has been working with administration to set up our debt retirement in such a way that it does not substantially increase the property tax...
Okay.
...for the people in our district.
Tax rate.
The tax rate.
Okay. That's all the questions I have.
You will pay more taxes because the values are going up, but the rate itself is stable.
Okay.
So we try to keep it level on the debt side of the house.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right. Next, we're representing the FY26 Compensation Adjustment for the Nonrepresented Employees. So the Board of Trustees annually approves salary increases for the nonrepresented employees, which include the education support personnel, professional support staff association, and administration employees. The recommendation is a 3.25% increase added to the base pay of each ESP, PSA, and ADM employee effective July 1st, 2025, and the estimated fiscal impact is $429,800. Are there any questions?
Trustee Nelson?
We do have the $429,800 somewhere in the budget to pay.
We do indeed.
And is that, the 3.25, can you give the foundation for that particular number?
Absolutely. So when I was looking at this number and proposing it to Dr. Spearman, I looked at what the COLA adjustment was for Social Security. I also looked at what the CPI index has been over the past 12 months. The COLA adjustment, I know, was only 2.5%, but that is Social Security. But when I looked at the CPI, that came in more like 3.2% over the past 12 months.
Well, very good. Do you think it's fair?
Any other questions?
Do you think it's fair?
Yes, I do think it is fair.
Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you.
All right. The last couple items are FY26 Final Budget. So the FY26 Budget Hearing is scheduled for Tuesday, June 24th. There have been no changes to the budget since the tentative budget was presented on April 8th and approved on April 22nd. The FY26 tentative budget has been available for public inspection in the Financial Services Office as well on our website. The notice of public hearing was published in the Rock River Times by Rock Valley Publishing and by Rock Valley Publishing in the Belvedere Daily Republican. It is the recommendation that the Board of Trustees adopt the fiscal year 2026 final budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025. And the last item is the certificate attesting to the FY2026 budget. This is a required certificate attesting to the fiscal year 26 budget, and this is required by the ICCB or Illinois Community College Board. Are there any questions?
Yeah. Any questions, comments, or correspondence as it relates to the publishing of the final budget?
I have received no comments, no questions so far.
Okay.
It's typical.
Any questions for Ellen or anybody else on the budget?
So again, public notice was in the Rockford Times...
Rock River Times, yes.
River Times, and the other one in Boone County?
Yes.
Those two?
Yep.
Was that the Republican or the Shopper?
Belvedere Daily Republican.
Yeah. Very good. All right. Okay. If no one has any other questions, I believe that brings the finance discussion to an end, and it brings us to the operations discussion. Trustee Trojan?
Well, we will have Mr. Rick take over from here.
Thank you, Trustee Trojan. Good evening, board members. The first item on the agenda is the Personnel Report. If you look at the Personnel Report, you'll see that there are two new hires for instructors that are listed there that will be beginning, be beginning in this fall, and we have an internal candidate who has taken up an interim Executive Director of Institutional Design, Teaching, and Innovation. We also have two director positions that we are in the process of doing interviews right now, and we have four full-time instructors positions that are also in the interview process.
Any questions? Trustee Nelson. See, I made the mistake on both sides now, so there you go. Trustee Nelson, go ahead.
You're asking for my question.
I'm asking you, yeah. Yeah, I would have asked you all of these questions, but you were in Norway, so don't give me any guff for not giving you any information in advance. You wouldn't return anybody's calls.
Kandu Snukka Norris?
Go ahead.
No. I see a lot of blanks here, as I often do. I don't see any departures I really like that. Are you thinking that we'll have these filled in at the last minute or for the next meeting? Or is it going to extend past that?
I will turn it over to Dr. Huntley.
We do anticipate that we will be able to complete the interview process and have names by the next meeting.
I'm sorry. I didn't understand you.
I was saying, we do anticipate that we will be able to complete the interview process with the blanks and have names by the next meeting.
Okay. I always prefer if we have the names in advance myself, but thank you for answering my question.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Jenna?
This is like a nomenclature question. What is the difference between full-time and temporary full-time?
I will have Dr. Smith answer.
Thank you.
That's a great question. The full-time are faculty that are on the tenure track. The temporary for one-year assignments.
Okay. And that does not include any kind of necessarily like a renewal? It's just the one year?
Correct. It's usually because we are trying to ascertain the need to have a full-time.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Go ahead.
This is a question for Dr. Huntley. So you were talking about how you have people already interviewed, already in the process of interviewing for these positions. In terms of the Director of Student Life, is there, what is like your anticipation of trying to get that position filled for? Because I know that there's a huge gap in that department right now.
Sure. Definitely. We are working feverishly to try to make sure that we have that filled by the time when the vote takes place for this position, so by the actual board meeting.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
You're laughing about it, but I go back to... Well, I know, and I like the way he speaks up. And just to appreciate that, and I also want to remind, we do like having, just like they reminded me earlier, they like having all the information at the cows, so they have a couple of weeks to digest it. And I know sometimes your schedules for purchases and hires and the like don't always, you know, allow you to do that, but if you could, just keep that in mind. Any other questions on the Personnel?
I would just agree with that, and the reason why we do it like this is just so you are aware that it's an active search.
Yep. Got it. And I'm good with that. Nothing? Downtown West?
Yes. I'd like to give an update on the Downtown West, share some information, a few pictures. As you're all aware, we have this Downtown West project going on. We're currently, we're currently end of May, beginning of June. We are still on schedule with our schedule. We are under the construction phase as it shows there. We keep moving forward. We have run into a few obstacles, but fortunately, we've been able to adjust the schedules in order to rectify those obstacles, some of them being undiscovered underground tanks, other issues with some materials, but we've been able to move forward and continue making progress. So as far as the schedule is concerned, we're doing well. Next slide.
Do we get any tax subsidies for that oil that you found on our property?
No. Speaking of that, the top right picture is this tank that we found. In case you were wondering, I figured you might want to see it. It was a little large. We have others. Pictures are the infrastructure, the sewer lines and water lines that are going in. We also have the footings and some of the basement walls that are being erected and poured at this time. So we are moving forward. The second pictures are just aerial shots of the buildings at the particular time. Ringland Johnson does use a drone and take aerial shots almost weekly of the site so that we can keep track of where we're at and how things are progressing, and it's much easier to do that with an overhead aerial shot.
Makes a nice movie.
Are you, are you... So that was Downtown West. Any questions on West?
Well, I have one more.
One more? Go ahead.
Sorry. We do have the change order log listed here. As you can see, there have been some, what I call, debits and other credits, so we are at about $57,000 of our $2.2 million contingency in change orders at this point. I do expect that we will have more, particularly right now as the laborers and the fields go into the different drawings and try and make sure that everything is correct and that it will work in the BIM model, which is a 3D model of the building.
Okay. Any questions? My only question, so you're covering it under number two, Downtown West. Is that actually your number four change order update, or is that a separate report?
I have another change order update for other projects. We have, we have more than Downtown West.
I know. I'm just making sure. Downtown West? Any other questions at Downtown West?
Yeah, I got it.
Trustee Nelson?
So are you satisfied with the progress so far, and there is no need for a third building?
I'm satisfied with the progress, and I know of no need for a third building.
All right. Very good.
Unless you want one.
I was hoping you did.
If you want one, let me know.
Trustee Trojan?
What's your feel about the contingency? Do you think you'll be able to hold it all the way through? Anything that's given you heartburn?
This project has given me heartburn.
The whole project, yeah, I know.
I feel somewhat confident that we'll be fine, but I have thought that in the past, and it has bitten me, so.
But nothing jumps out?
Nothing jumps out.
Okay. Good.
We found oil on a property. If we find lithium or cobalt, that'll just go straight into the EV program, might help offset some of those change orders. Okay. Great. Thanks.
I've learned to expect everything.
Nothing else on Downtown West? We'll move on to Classroom Two.
Classroom Building Two, I wanted to give you a quick update. Things are getting very busy in my division between the downtown campus now and CL2 starting up. We have two multimillion-dollar projects that are going simultaneously now, so I want to say a word of thanks and appreciation to my team. They are putting in many, many hours for these different projects. Regarding CL2, as you know, that is a Capital Development Board, CDB. For the new members, that is a state entity that regulates construction through the state of Illinois, and the state usually pays 75%, and we pay 25% for CDB projects, but that price can vary. We've totaled a budget of $38,700,000 for this with a $7.3 million furniture fixtures and equipment, FFNE, that will be administered directly by Rock Valley College. CDB has selected the architect firm. It is Bailey Edward Architect based in Chicago. RVC has conducted the initial meetings and walkthroughs with the design team. They generally will walk the building with my team, get a feel for the building before they start meeting with the people who are in the building and looking at the program needs. The next area that will start up next week is they will start to meet with all of the different departments, and the design team is scheduling those to start, like I said, as early as next week, and will continue through July with most, with it hopefully coming to an end. and will continue through July with most, with it hopefully coming to an end in September. Part of the delay is because we have to wait for faculty to come back from summer break. So we'll be working through that with the architect firms. As we go from programmatic design, we will then switch to schematic design and design development. And if you recall, that's the same process that we went through on all of our previous buildings, ATC and downtown. The building is scheduled to be completed in July of 2028, according to the CDB. Any questions?
And does that meet your years' goals, your schedule?
If it was not a CDB project, I don't think we would need till July of 2028.
Wonder. Yeah, that's a long. Three years instead of two.
Jenna, did you have a hand?
I just had a question.
Jenna.
Oh, Jenna, I'm sorry.
Not John.
I was just gonna say that there's a lot of nostalgia for CL2 amongst my friends mostly. So if you end up, you know, auctioning off any wood paneling or smells from CL2, like we would buy it.
Most of the paneling in CL2 is actually old redwood that you can't get anymore. So we're going to, we're going to, the design team has already noted that and will be looking to reuse a lot of that in the new design for some of that nostalgic reason.
Thank you.
But the others we will keep to replace other areas because we cannot get that wood anymore.
Any other questions from trustees other than trustee Nelson? Okay.
I have a question. So, so with the classroom two building, so when is it expected for classes to stop being held there?
Classes will stop being held there this summer. People are being moved out, as we speak actually, to other areas of the campus. And we will have the building closed off so that there's going to be some things that need to be done that might be done sooner as part of the project, namely abatement, which would be abatement of anything like asbestos or anything that might be in the building. So we want to get that cleared and out of the way so that the project can move smoothly.
Okay. Is the movement, the moving of these classes going to affect, is it going to end up affecting the students' schedules or anything like that?
No, the moves are going to be, are being coordinated over the summer to lessen any sort of impact. And the programs that do need to be moved, massage therapy, we're coordinating with them to move them in between classes.
Okay.
So the goal is to have everything set up for the fall semester.
Yeah. I was just asking because I know some of the classes overlap with some other classes that happen in CL1 typically, so.
Yeah. We're watching the schedules. We're making sure that we're trying to lessen the impact that students might face. But I do often tell people that unfortunately, in order for me to make the omelette, sometimes I do have to break a few eggs.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really like sitting at this end of the table, by the way. The Bailey Edward Architect Firm, if I remember right, it took a fair amount of time to even pick them. Have they been on campus?
Yes. So yes, it took CDB months to pick them. I don't remember how long, but it was months, probably six. They have been, they have conducted the initial meetings and walkthroughs. We have conducted that with the design team. So they come out and they've walked the building with our IT department, our maintenance department, and looked over the building and our boilerhouse people looked at all the systems and had preliminary conversations. We've sent them some preliminary drawings and information that they've asked for on the old building, the old building set drawings, things of that nature. So we've done that initial project setup. And now they're to the point where they're going to start asking some more specific questions about the future of the building.
And are they working with requisite dispatch? And I don't, I don't want you to even answer that question, but do they know that we have a project here and they're interested in helping us? And are they working with us pretty well?
The architects?
Yeah.
Well, yeah. They're, they're doing their due diligence and process after they've been selected as our architect. I have not seen them do anything that's unusual or strange to me.
Okay. So, and, and are they, they're not putting us aside or anything? They take this project seriously is what, really what I'm trying to drive at?
Oh, yeah, they bug us a lot. So they're, they are definitely working on this project diligently, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Any other questions on the CL2 update? Change order update then?
Yes, so I do have some change order updates, not related to downtown. The first item is the power shed construction. If you recall, this was to replace the old power shed near lot one. This project has completed. We started out with $30,000, $30,530 of contingency. We are ending up getting back $33,767. So we actually received more credits and debits and the contractor will be giving us back some money.
Any questions on?
And the next one, oh, any, sorry, yeah. The last one is for the RVC security upgrade that's going on right now for all over campus. That one is, we, during the course of looking over the issued for construction drawings versus the issued for bid drawings, we discovered that there were some areas that we did not have specific doors hardware and information included that we had to add. This is to add those door, that door hardware and integration into the project. It's not unheard of at this time to find some change orders, so, in the project. Any questions?
Any questions? Hearing done. Rock Valley College events calendar.
Yes, the event calendar is there for everybody to review. Couple items that I wanted to point out is basically, right now, the, the big thing that's going on out here is all the shows at the BST. There's Grease, SpongeBob, Ragtime, so there are, oh, and The Wedding Singer. They're at the BST. I recommend coming out. They are well being, they have been well received and received good reviews so far.
Don't forget Mary Poppins. Mary Poppins.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yes, Mary, yeah, there's five actually, so I keep forgetting about that. Yeah, so, and then there's also Mary Poppins. So I recommend coming out.
And my daughter is Mary Poppins, by the way.
Oh, what, there you go. So I'd definitely come out to Mary Poppins. So that's, that's the gist of it for the summer. We do still have new student welcoming events that are going on throughout the summer. So any questions about any of the events?
No, if you need a Scrooge, you can contact John and myself, though.
Yeah, I don't think we're doing the Christmas story.
Any other questions on the events calendar? Thank you very much for your, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Any, is there any new business going to be brought up? No?
Yes, just a brief, you will receive information regarding parades this year.
Okay.
We'll send that out to you probably tomorrow, but this week. And also Smart Camp information.
Okay.
So you haven't received a Smart Camp, but if you get a chance to be a part of it, just come on that Friday of Smart Camp so you can see the youth, the middle schoolers' presentations and their ability to race their vehicles and stuff like that. It's a great event. That's at the Advanced Technology Center, but we'll send that to you. Each of you received the Northwest Quarterly. We have one article in there that's also regarding Rock Valley College. So each of you should have received the Northwest Quarterly this evening. And I believe.
I'll bring up, so, under unfinished business, in previous meetings, we've discussed a request for a proposed tax abatement for a company elect reform, and they were requesting a 10-year tax abatement. We had gone back and discussed other, other year ranges, three or five, and the company would, would, would ask us to consider their vote up or down, essentially, their 10-year tax abatement request. So it's been on previous agendas. We've discussed it previously. It's going to be on the, on the agenda at our next meeting for an up or down vote. That's the only other unfinished business that I'm aware of, so. Anything else?
I don't know if you guys have met our executive director, right? Wicker.
John Wick.
Not Wick, but.
John Wick, yeah, John Wick six. All right.
But I just wanted to put a name with the face.
Okay.
And, and that's it.
Thank you, thanks very much. And before we go to clothes session, what, there was something else?
Yeah, right there.
Oh, hi. Before we go to clothes session, I'd just like to, it's kind of unfinished business or old business, I'd like to though, thank everybody that expressed their condolences at the passing of my brother. And for those who don't know, that my mother passed away this Friday and I was preoccupied last week with that. And she, she passed away on her birthday and my brother's birthday on Friday, June 6th. So, so thank you in advance for any condolences. I appreciate it. As I was speaking with Ann previously in the, in this meeting and in previous meetings, the RVC community has had a lot of losses in the last year. And I'd just like to thank everybody for their continued performance at the levels that they have and the strength they've shown through their own personal losses and, and family situations. And I wish everyone who is currently undergoing any type of care or operations or procedures all the best in the world, so. Do I have a motion to adjourn to close session to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, preferment for dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational or educational setting per section 2C1 and/or the purchase or lease of real property for the use of public body per section 2C5 and/or litigation has been filed or is pending or probable per section 2C11, all in accordance with the Illinois Open Meetings Act?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Trojan, second by Simpson. Roll call.
Gorski.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Goldsmith, yes. Blake.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Salto.
Salto. You hear him? She there? Salto?
I did not hear her.
We have a motion to go on the closed session per three different sections of the closed meeting, Illinois meeting, exactly, and we're asking for whether or not you would like to go or agree to go on the close or not. Yes.
Trojan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Who would you like in this closed session?
Vice President Huntley, Vice President Jinks will be the two that I need at this time. And of course, Attorney Joe Porcos. I believe that's it.
Hit the road, folks. Hit the new road, folks. Hit the new road, folks.
Room.
So as the board's here, that's all you need.
I used to.
No action taken.
Here we go. I'd like to reconvene into open session. No final actions or decisions were made in our closed session. Any other comments that I need to make before we proceed here? Okay. Next regular Board of Trustees meeting is June 24, 2025 at 5:15. This meeting will be held in the Performing Arts Center, P R Room 0214, and Educational Resource Center, E R C on main campus. And the next committee of the whole meeting is July 8, 2025 at 5:15. The meeting will be held in the Performing Arts Center, P R 0214, and Educational Resource Center, E R C on the main campus. Have a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion by Trojan, second by Simpson. Roll call.
Gorski.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Goldsmith, yes. Blake.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Sal. I'm sorry, Salto.
Yep.
Yes.
Trojan.
Thank you for participating remotely.
Motion carries.
Enjoy.
Enjoy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Eha.